Pledge allegiance.
All together, I pledge allegiance to the flag. And I say to you, it should be proud of what is stands foundation and think about indivisible, liberty, justice, and law.
Before I begin, the opening remarks and the microphone is at the end of the agenda. So, we're gonna be through the agenda, and some people complained saying that we should have it at the end so we can comment on the discussion the board has prior to that. So, first thing on the agenda, would Robbie Thibault come forward and Dave Liscio? Robbie, behalf of the Board of Selectmen and the citizens of the town in Nahat, I present you with this award for your 20 years of dedicated service to the town. You're like your grandfather and your father and, you know, your performance at the WAF, as Waffinger and Harbor Mass has been outstanding. I want to congratulate you.
I appreciate it. I would agree, Robbie, you've done a great job. I know that you can still stay on as a firefighter if you could, but we're all getting old.
Dave, I want to say the same to you. Your 20 years of the service and your firefighters and firefighters outstanding. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen and the citizens of the town, we appreciate very, very much. Your dedicated service to the town of Nahat.
Oh, and you get citations from the Speaker of the House in those honor books.
Yes.
Do you want to do a picture with the members of the fire department?
Yeah.
Yeah, we should.
You guys don't mind coming up and let's get a quick picture together?
Sure. Um... As you know, we're back to the normal schedule of the Board of Selectmen on Thursday nights. And it's two meetings per month. It'll be the first and third Thursday, and that'll go through next May. And we want to remind everyone that has a vote in the harbor, and the boat hauling dates are October 12th and 14th. So, the votes gotta pull out. Let's entertain a motion to approve the minutes from March 4th, 2019, March 21st, 2019, June 5th, 2019, and July 24th. Is there a motion?
Yes, there is a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Where's my National Grid guy? Where is he? Come on up. We got you first on the agenda.
Good evening. My name is John Chankowski. My address is 170 Medford Street in Malden, Mass. I'm representing National Grid. National Grid would like to relocate one jointly owned pole on Pond Street. I think it's pole 15 approximately 18 feet near house 65. The pole is on private property, which we do not have an easement, and it's not on the property line. So, doing that, it will be on public property and will be on the property line. So, if you have any questions or concerns, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Where's the pole?
It's 18 feet. It's on private property.
On private, Pond Street?
Yeah, but it's on, it is on private property.
Okay.
Moving it 18 feet down on public property, it will be on the property line and it will be on public.
Okay. Okay, I move that Board of Selectmen vote to approve the petition submitted by...
Hold on, hold on, hold on. We got some discussion.
Yeah, there's a little...
Make sure as you come up to the microphone, we give you a name and address so for the record.
My name is Mark Rainsterna, 61 Pond Street in Nahat. The pole does exist on private property at 65 Pond Street. There's also a anchor. Feedback. There's an anchor attached to it that comes off into the back. If this pole gets moved to the property line, it will be visible in front of my barn that I spent a lot of time and money changing, taking wires away and poles away from it to perfect a look that is historic. And if you put this pole in the corner, it's gonna damage that look. It's also gonna be on my property. The guide, the anchor will be on my property, and I don't want it there. It's a guy, it's a cable that has a wide yellow rubber sheath on it that's highly visible. We've spent a lot of time on that property and a lot of money on that property restoring it. The moving the pole addition will have negative benefits, negative impacts on some of the other properties, lights shining in windows where they don't shine now. If this pole is moved, it's gonna open up a door for everybody else to move a pole that doesn't have an easement, and that's up and down Pond Street. There's no easement for the wires that go above our property. There's no easement for the poles that exist on the Savino's properties, nor is there an easement for the pole that exists on the Cattillo's property. If National Grid put the poles in the wrong place, they should fix it, but not by, not to the detriment of anybody else other than where it's located. They can move the pole a foot forward from where it is, keeping it on the, at the same location, not having to change any of the other wires, and the, and the anchor would stay in that same place. If the property owner doesn't want to give them that easement, National Grid has a couple of options. They can fight it through adverse possession. The pole and the anchor have been there for more than 50 years. Or they can use eminent domain process and take an easement by eminent domain, and then nothing has to be moved, and it doesn't have to disrupt anybody in the neighborhood.
And you, you went through the expense of putting all your wires underground, right?
I did, correct. And they come off of that pole.
We also, I'm Marie Rainsterna, property owner as well. We also...
Where do you live?
Excuse me?
Where do you live?
61 Pond Street. First off, the owner of the property that currently where the pole exists bought that property knowing that that pole was on the property. It's been there, we have a picture back to 1968. I'm sure it's been there longer than that. Also, the, we purchased the property from Winnie Hodges, and we got all the proper permits, sign-offs, authorizations, whatever, to hook our utilities into that pole and to run our wires underground. So, I don't understand why, because someone just decides they don't want the pole on their property, that it should, again, as Mark said, disrupt several people. There's no hardship, hardship to the pole being there. The homeowner can certainly develop that land without moving the pole. And again, we have an historic building, as all of you know, the Hodges' barn that we took pride in restoring and keeping to the integrity of the way it was, you know, when we restored it.
The pole currently is on private property.
Correct.
That's the reason why you want to move it, correct?
Correct.
But you're saying that you can, he's saying that you can just move it off the property onto the sidewalk and...
99% we want to put the pole on the property line. We don't want to put it in front of fun's houses and things like that. We always want to put it on the property line.
But by moving it to where they're proposing to move it, it's gonna be in front of the house across the street, right in front of their living room window.
Correct.
Directly across the street. It will be closer to our barn, which, and it wasn't there when we purchased it. It was 18 feet north.
How come they didn't put it on, how come they didn't put it on the property line back when they put it up?
Actually, Verizon set the poles in many years ago. We now set the poles in Nahat. Two years ago, we changed it. Telephone set the pole.
Probably back in 1911 when they put in the telephone exchange.
But we shouldn't fear the hardship because of...
Of moving it 18 feet.
Right. And, and again, we purchased our property without a telephone pole on it. We developed our property based on the fact that there wasn't going to be a telephone pole on the property. The homeowner of that property bought the property with the pole. If she did not want the pole there, she shouldn't have purchased the land.
Well, that's, again, that's, that, you know, I can't debate that with you. You're at 65 Pond Street, correct?
We're 61.
61. It's with your...
And there are many properties in town where the, where the poles are on private property. So, as, as Mark said, why doesn't everybody have the, so we're just gonna start moving poles around town?
Again, I, I, you know, with everyone else, I'm just...
I understand.
This is a hearing just for this specific pole on Pond Street. I'm not worried about the other poles, okay? Okay, well, hang on. Is there anyone else want to speak on this? Yes, come forward.
I'm Helmin Sisk. I live at 64 Pond Street, right across from the pole we're talking about. At this time, I do not have the advantage of underground wiring. So, the overhead wiring, which isn't the most scenic, does come into my property at this time. It is parallel to my driveway and the yard, but it's offset off to the side of my house when you look at the house. When this pole moves the 18 feet, it, these wires will now cut directly across my front lawn. So, the view from inside the house looking out will be disrupted, but also the curb appeal will now have these wires draping across that.
But you have wires in front of your home now because this pole, I don't see it in the diagram here. I don't see the next poles on that Pond Street side, on that side.
At this time, the wires do come in the front of the house, but it's off to the side, and it aligns with the driveway. Now, it will be coming diagonally across my front yard as it moves. So, I'm just speaking as part of that.
Yes.
The, the service going to that home will not change. It'll stay in the exact location. The pole will move, but that service will not change at all. We're not gonna move that service. It's always gonna still be there.
Wherever the wires come off of, there's no pole there.
It's the pole will be moved over, but it'll be just attached to the wire itself. It'll be the midstand service, so that'll stay as is. That will not change.
Right now, the wires come off the pole.
Yep.
Now, you're saying if that moves, those wires will not come off the pole?
Yep. That, that service to your home will not change.
No, I don't mean...
That's why it's...
I mean, it's now comes from the pole, which is now ahead. So, that angle will change from being parallel...
It will change a little bit, yes, that's correct. It's, it's all in public property. That's why we have petition submitted.
Can I, can I ask, are some of the wires, are these wires that come from that pole going to your house, Mark? Are they, they're underground, correct?
My, my wires are underground.
But do they, are they on her, on the other person's property?
They do, because the pole exists on that property. They had to come from there, and we had permission from Winnie Hodges when we bought the land. She signed off on our building permits and all, and our building plans, because she had, she had final say on all development on that property, and she signed off on it and recorded that at the registry.
So, you, you know, your wires are underground from that pole?
Yes.
It comes down the pole and goes underground?
Yes.
It's deeded that way?
Recorded at the registry, yes.
We have the papers with her signature on it.
Well, I just want to, I just want to make sure, will that change? I mean...
Well, now, the, the wires are gonna have to be moved. But it's, but beyond moving the wires, they're still gonna be underground. We'll still have to force, make sure that they go underground. What will happen is the aesthetic view of the barn is now you're gonna have a telephone pole with a guide wire coming off of it, an anchor, and a bright yellow sheath on that that's gonna be eminently visible. We thought about the idea of putting trees in front of it, but because all of my utilities run there, you can't plant.
I, I have one of my, a guide wire, and the guide wire is so it doesn't fall on my house. Which, I don't mind. You know, I'd rather than have the pole fall on my house.
You're used to it. It's been there, and you're used to it.
No, I, I had it put up.
You put it up yourself?
No, I didn't put it up.
That's your choice, though.
That was your choice. This is, this is something that's gonna be not our choice.
It's for safety, really.
But it doesn't have to be moved. That's the problem. The pole does not have to be moved.
Can they, I mean, can you, everybody come to an agreement with this somehow?
Can I just say also one thing?
Excuse me, your name and...
Kathy Carroll.
And where do you live?
60 Pond Street.
16?
60, 6-0.
On Pond Street?
Mm-hmm. I'm diagonal to this, and I have one line that runs from my house to this pole, and I have concerns because there's a giant tree in my front yard, and I always have to trim the tree. Telephone set the pole.
Probably back in 1911 when they put in the telephone exchange.
But we shouldn't fear the hardship because of-
Of moving it 18 feet.
Right. And again, we purchased our property without a telephone pole on it. We developed our property based on the fact that there wasn't going to be a telephone pole on the property. The homeowner of that property bought the property with the pole. If she did not want the pole there, she shouldn't have purchased the land.
Well, that's, again, that's, you know, I can't debate that with you. You're at 65 Pond Street, correct?
We're 61.
We're 61.
61.
It's with your-
And there are many properties in town where the poles are on private property. So as Mark said, why doesn't everybody have the, so we're just going to start moving poles around town?
Again, I, you know, everyone else, I'm just-
I understand.
This is a hearing just for this specific pole on Pond Street. I'm not worried about the other poles, okay? Okay, well, hang on. Does anyone else want to speak on this? Yes, come forward.
I'm Helmin Sisk. I live at 64 Pond Street, right across from the pole we're talking about. At this time, I do not have the advantage of underground wiring. So the overhead wiring, which isn't the most scenic, does come into my property at this time. It is parallel to my driveway and the yard, but it's offset off to the side of my house when you look at the house. When this pole moves the 18 feet, these wires will now cut directly across my front lawn. So the view from inside the house looking out will be disrupted, but also the curb appeal will now have these wires draping across that.
But you have wires in front of your home now, because this pole, I don't see it in the diagram. I don't see the next poles on that Pond Street side, on that side.
At this time, the wires do come in the front of the house, but it's off to the side and it aligns with the driveway. Now it will be coming diagonally across my front yard as it moves. So I'm just speaking as part of that.
Yes.
The service going to that home will not change. It'll stay in the exact location. The pole will move, but that service will not change at all. We're not going to move that service. It's always going to still-
Wherever the wires come off of, there's no pole there.
It's the pole will be moved over, but it'll be just attached to the wire itself. It'll be the midstand service, so that'll stay as is. That will not change.
Right now, the wires come off the pole.
Yep.
Is-
Now you're saying if it moves-
Move the pole.
Those wires will not come off the pole?
Yep. That service to your home will not change.
No, I don't mean-
Why it's-
I mean, it's now comes from the pole, which is now ahead. So that angle will change from being parallel-
It will change a little bit, yes, that's correct. It's all with the public property, that's why we have petition to sit for that.
Can I ask, are some of the wires, are these wires that come from that pole going to your house, Mark? Are they, they're underground, correct?
My wires are underground.
But do they, are they on her, on the other person's property?
They do, because the pole exists on that property, they had to come from there. We had permission from Winnie Hodges when we bought the land. She signed off on our building permits and our building plans, because she had final say on all development on that property. And she signed off on it and recorded that at the registry.
Your wires are underground from that pole?
Yes.
It comes down the pole and goes underground?
Yes, sir.
It's deeded that way?
Recorded at the registry, yes.
We have the papers with her signature on it.
Well, I just want to, I just want to make sure, will that change? I mean-
Well, now the wires are going to have to be moved. But beyond moving the wires, they're still going to be underground. We'll still have to force, make sure that they go underground. What will happen is the aesthetic view of the barn is now you're going to have a telephone pole with a guide wire coming off of it, an anchor, and a bright yellow sheath on that that's going to be eminently visible. We thought about the idea of putting trees in front of it, but because all of my utilities run there, you can't plant.
I have one of my guide wires, guide wires so it doesn't fall on my house.
Let's do it.
I don't mind. You know, I'd rather not have the pole fall on my house.
But you're used to it. It's been there and you're used to it.
No, I had it put up.
You put it up yourself?
No, I didn't put it up.
That's your choice, though.
That was your choice. This is something that's going to be not our choice.
It's for safety, really.
But it doesn't have to be moved, that's the problem. The pole does not have to be moved.
Can they, I mean, can you, everybody come to an agreement with this somehow?
Can I just say also one thing?
Excuse me, your name and-
Kathy Carroll.
And where do you live?
60 Pond Street.
16?
60, 6-0.
On Pond Street?
Mm-hmm. I'm diagonal to this, and I have one line that runs from my house to this pole, and I have concerns because there's a giant tree in my front yard, and I always have to trim the tree, be very careful of that one line. I don't, I really don't want to have to disrupt that if necessary. I have concerns about that. I also have concerns about the light from the pole, how that visually is going to be different from my living room as well, because of a giant picture window. But my main concern is the one line that runs from the pole to my house. It runs right through this tree that I take very good care of because it's a beautiful tree, but I just don't want any disruption to that. And so visually for me, I don't understand how this is going to be different for me, but I just wanted to speak my piece and let you know that I do have concerns about that. Okay? Thank you.
James Savino, 59 Pond Street. I have two poles on my property. They're on private property. I just see opening up Pandora's Box. My wires come in from underground. There's the other pole facing my house to the left that services another neighbor across the street that goes underground. I just see Pandora's Box being opened with all the poles on that side, because they're all on private property.
Okay, thanks, Jimmy.
You're welcome.
She's nearby, Richie.
I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm Kristen Lee, and my abode is 65 Pond Street, which is directly where the current pole is located. When I bought the land, I, we checked the deeds, the quitclaim and everything, and there was no mention of permission granted by the previous owner. And I verified that subsequently with Winnie Hodges, and she verified it with her lawyer. The problem is that I wanted, I had no, I had no knowledge of this whatsoever, and neither did Winnie Hodges, the previous owner. But when I wanted to erect a fence on the property line, I had DigSafe, and they identified that there were underground utility wires running across our property onto the pole by underground. And that prohibited me from safely completing my fence project. And I was, I communicated with Mark Reen Sterner, and he asked me if I would give permission, an easement, and I said, "No, I'm sorry, I will not." And then I subsequently checked with Winnie Hodges, and she checked with her lawyer, and there was nothing in the quitclaim in Salem Court that said that they had permission.
Can we, can we have the town council look at this first, at the deeds?
You have, I believe, you, as a board of selectmen, as board of selectmen, your options are to approve, deny, or table for further information. So certainly you have the capability.
Go ahead, Mark.
We have the paperwork.
I have a signed document that was recorded at the day we purchased the property. We sat-
No, I believe you. I trust you. National Grid, let me ask you this question.
I have one thing for you, too, but actually, the secondary siphon service is all customer own. So we just, you know, he put the service in, and we just tap you on the top of the pole. It's all customer own. So it's not like we don't have to go out and inspect it. It's all customer own between, and the wire inspector, Ed Brulon, so.
How many poles on that side? This plan, this plan here does not show.
It shows that one.
The existing pole and the 18 feet is moving over.
Two with me? I think there's two, if I'm not mistaken.
It's three.
Is it three?
I have two on the pole.
It goes down.
Are you guys down on Valley Road, Jimmy? On Pond Street? Two?
One on the other hand, one on further.
Let me ask you, let me ask you this question. If we table this, can you, I'm going to ask to table it for night, and so I'd like to see a complete plan, and we'll put it on the agenda for two weeks. And if you can work out something with the neighbors, either, you know, maybe, I don't know how many wires, if some of these people have them, but it sounds like they got them underground, maybe you could put them all underground. I mean, I understand that, you know, I mean-
That's something that-
Because it doesn't seem like either side, you know, Pond Street, they want this pole, you know, and I'm trying to figure, you know, it's on private property now, and I can see Mark is, he did a lot of work on this beautiful house, and I just, you know, he, to have that pole in the middle was-
I guess the reason why we are here, because we don't have an easement for this pole, so we have to move it, you know, so that's, you have to-
Have you talked to the owner about the existing pole before an easement?
On, you own the property, correct? Yes, and she wants to move it.
She wants to move it.
I want to know because I want to know if my parents own my property, and I believe your permission from Winnie Hodges.
Boy, well, no, I understand, okay.
Excuse me, just from the background, I believe, uh-
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to give you a couple of weeks to work this out, okay? It seems like the neighborhood, you've got a problem or crisis here, that you really don't want that pole. I know the pole, the current pole is on private property, you want to move it, but if either way you move it, it seems you're going to be, someone else is going to have the same problem.
Well, like I said, moving the pole on a property line is a standard procedure. That's what we do, so I don't understand what-
I don't understand why you can't just move it forward instead of-
He's going to have to move the service.
Uh?
He's going to have to move his service onto, you know-
I'm not worried about the service, I'm just, but why can't, why, as, why can't you move it forward?
Which means he'd have to-
Put it right in the sidewalk.
Yeah, you have to move the lines. So why would you put it on public way?
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Put it straight forward.
Wait a minute, I, excuse me, I don't want to get into full discussion of this. I'll table it, I'll move that we table it, and somehow, if you can work it out with the neighbors and come up with a solution, be helpful, Mark, hopefully.
Thank you.
Is that, okay?
Thank you.
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, exactly, I mean, I'm just suggesting, I'm not-
Yeah, okay. I'll make a motion, well, first of all, I'm going to read the original motion.
Yes, yes.
Let me just read, oh, go ahead.
Sure. Yeah, go ahead. Now, you live at what number?
65 Pond, which is adjacent to the-
It's an empty lot.
It's an empty lot, but the pole is on our property and without permission from either the previous owner nor myself. And what I-
When did you buy the property?
Last year.
Last year from Winnie Hodges?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and?
She made no mention of it, because we had no, no knowledge of it.
Well, this pole's been up there for about-
A long time.
Yes.
And it was always undeveloped, so, you know, whatever. But when I discovered that it was going to prohibit me from finishing my fence, my fence around the property to define it, because there were live wires underground from the Reen Sterners, then I had to stop the fence completion, and that's what, that's the reason that I wanted to look at the pole and realize that that too was on my land, not just their under, partly their underground-
When we hear this again, I'd like to have you show me in your diagram, your fence line, where you're putting the fence, your property line. So I'm looking at it, I don't see it here.
I didn't bring it with me, so-
No, no, but in order for us to make a-
Certainly.
A decision on this, I'm going to find, figure out exactly where your property line is and where the fence is going.
Correct.
I see the new fence you're putting up. I go by it, most days, it looks very nice, by the way.
Thank you. I, yeah.
But I, again, I would like to see, I don't, you know, I hear, I don't have a plan for that.
There is one filed with the building inspector as well as the town hall, but I'd be happy to give you a copy. Furthermore, with National Grid, I, they were very, they wanted to make sure that that was correct, that the pole was on our property, and it took some time, but then I told them that if the pole could be moved onto the town land, neither my property, well, I mean, on the sidewalk, that is, there's about a two-foot corridor, so in that corridor, that's neither my land nor my neighbor's land, then I would, if the old pole was taken down and the utilities that are on our land were moved correctly on their property, that I would permit National Grid to a guideline going into our property to secure the pole. And that's the condition, that if the underground utilities are moved and I can finish-
Again, again, that's, you know, I-
Yeah.
But it's like, we don't want to get involved in that.
Yeah.
Okay, you're going to have to work with your National Grid and your neighbors about, you know, that, all that, all right?
May I make a suggestion? Richie, yeah. I suggest that National Grid, since you did encroach that piece of property a long time ago, you move the pole forward, or consider it, and pay to have his utilities moved. I mean, he had no idea that that was going to happen to him. I mean, it doesn't cost you anything to do that.
Well, if we move that pole, like I said, I don't think there's going to be enough room. The ADA, I think it's going to be, was it 36 or 48 inches? Yeah, sidewalk.
Yeah, you have to have someone walking by, and it's not going to be big enough to do that, so that's one of the reasons, so.
On the sidewalk?
Yeah. It's, there's no, there is no sidewalk, it's just, there is no-
Sidewalk, yeah.
And if they move it 18 feet down towards my property, it's the same way.
Okay, that's right. It's not going to be any different if you move it the way I see it. I mean, I walk, I go by there all the time. It's going to be the same sidewalk that's 18 feet up. I mean, I suggest that you work with the two of butters so everybody's happy, and you pay to put her wires, their wires underground. Really, doesn't, yeah, National Grid should pay for it. The other ones are-
They didn't put it underground.
You encroached their property.
National, I mean, Verizon put the pole-
Well, then, get, have Verizon pay for it. It's your problem. Okay, I'll read the original motion, Richie, and then we'll table it, okay? I move that the board of selectmen vote to approve the petition submitted by National Grid to relocate one existing pole, pole 15, approximately 18 feet south of existing pole 15, located near 65 Pond Street. Second, and then we'll just table it.
Why should we even bring up the motion? Just, we're going to table it anyway.
We'll table it.
We're going to table it for the time being, because I'm, again, the plan that I'm looking at, and I don't, these neighbors coming up, I'm not sure how many poles. If you give me a complete diagram, exactly what's on here, all I see is the residence and the, the pole, the original pole where you're moving it to, I mean, that's all I see. I don't see any other pole.
Oh, we got a, we got a map from the city of Nahat, and they don't have much.
Again, yeah, but I, you know, the onus is not on me to go digging for maps.
The city of Nahat didn't have much either.
Well, no, I understand, but it's, the onus is on you to come up with a suggested plan and work it out with the neighbors, I would think.
We had this problem-
Oh, 18 feet on the property line, that's what-
We had this problem once before on High Street, I believe up near the cemetery, Callum, is that it? And you were the guy that presented it, and you had to work it out with the neighbors, and you did, and it worked out just fine. And I suggest that you do that, I mean, and I suggest that you pay to have her wires moved.
And this is why I'm here, to move the pole 18 feet on the property line. Thank you.
Let me ask you this question. You said that pole was on private property. Is that private, that owner asked you to move that pole? You told me that that pole, the existing pole, that you have on there now, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Good. The existing pole's on private property, am I correct? Has that owner asked you to move that pole?
Yes, the owner asked us to move it.
She has, okay.
Could I be included in the arena being considered around this conversation? I am across the road from this pole. It impacts me being on the other side and the waters. Not just you on my side.
Well, hopefully, National Grid or Verizon will come up with a solution to this problem to satisfy all the neighbors. I really don't want to get into a pole swapping, a pole moving in the town of Nahat, you know. I'd love to see all the wires underground. It would be huge, make a difference. But it is what it is, and I can't tell you, you know, these poles and, you know, we'll see what National Grid comes up and suggests, and so, Corey, we're going to table that for two weeks. I give you enough time to come back?
I suggest you talk with them and come up with a solution.
Anytime we have.
And if, if the solution, if the, let me, let me ask you this question, and I'll tell you this. If the solution is not made, we'll vote on it, one way or the other. Would you schedule that for two weeks, Tony, please? Any other questions on the pole? We don't really, in the town of Nahat, we've got a lot of these poles, everywhere and anywhere. We start moving poles, it's going to be a problem, so. All right, anything else?
Yeah. Do they have to vote?
Table.
To table, to close?
Yes, we're going to vote, we're going to vote on that. Motion's been made to table. I second the motion, discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion is the, that, your request has been tabled, and we're going to schedule it for two weeks. So hopefully, it gives you 10 days, two weeks to come to conclusion and meet with Verizon and our National Grid, and hopefully, maybe bring down, okay? Anything else? Next on the agenda. B, we got a, I need a motion to approve the 60th Birthday Block Party, September 7th, 2019, from 3:00 PM to 4:00 AM. No, no, 10:00 PM, I'm sorry. I have to wait. I'd like to see the motion approved.
Okay, I move the board of selectmen vote to approve the 60th Birthday Block Party for September 7th, 2019, from 3:00 to 10:00 PM on Hubby Way.
I will second the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We need to approve the amendment to Play It As It Lies vote under Section C. You want to explain this on the lease, Tony?
Yep, we brought this up a few board of selectmen meetings ago. The Play It As It Lies needs to update their liquor license permit, and in order to do so, they have to update the contract that they have with the town, which still has the former partner listed on there. So this amendment would simply remove the former partner from the contract with the town. Dan Scrip, town council, has engaged both parties. I believe both parties are on board with this amendment and just needs the board of selectmen's approval.
Okay, Enzo, you want to make the motion?
Hey, I move that the board, this board of selectmen execute the amendment to the town's 2016 lease and management agreement with Play It As It Lies Golf Management Incorporated in order to clarify the current relationship between Anthony D. Nomenicus and Play It As It Lies Golf Management.
I'll second that motion. Further, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. I only like to be talked, you know, once, and when I talk it, that's it, you know what I mean? I don't want to hear anybody else. Please. Motion's been seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And the next motion- And the next motion is to appoint, uh, on-call firefighters?
Okay, I move that the board of selectmen vote to approve the appointments of Douglas Cronin, Evan Scortis, William Hussey, Tara Drisco as call firefighters contingent on completion of the Massachusetts Firefighting Academy.
I will second the motion, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Right, we should make this clear, though, that, um, at some point, I think Tony, I discussed this with Tony, that we only have money to send five, four or five people, and that we should, they should not hesitate to sign up and go to training at the fire department. Um, I know that when Mr. Former Selectman Manning and I were call firemen, I mean, we didn't have to go to the academy, we just did training down there, and, uh, we shouldn't discourage anybody for signing up, because next year, we might have money to put those people through.
It's, uh, both, there's different limitations, so there's a physical that each applicant has to go through, which costs the town a certain amount of money, um, and then certainly, uh, there's a limit on how many spots are available at the academy, so that's another limitation, but you're absolutely right, we are, um, talking with the fire department now about some type of third category of call firemen, or second category of call firemen pre-academy, so if, if anyone from town or within, I think we said a mile or a mile and a half, um, willing to participate as a call fireman, absolutely, reach out to the town, reach out to the fire department, we'd love to have you signed on, and then potentially get you into the next academy.
Good.
But this is a, an effort, um, that we put together within a week, and immediately got ten applications, which is now down, it got narrowed down to four now, based on different things, but, uh, able to get, to add four, uh, folks from, folks, four residents from Nahat that are willing to join the, uh, fire department is, is, uh, we're, we're very excited about it.
Very good. Any other further discussion? All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, this is a request, um, for a buyback of the cemetery plot, Mr. Gustavo Fish Jr. E., make a motion?
Yep, I move that the board of selectmen vote to approve the buyback of cemetery plot, uh, Gustavo Fish Jr.
I'll second the motion, discussion?
There's two, two lots, two graves, uh, Tony?
Yes.
And they're just going to the coffees, good.
All right. Yeah. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is the, um, approval, um, of Nahat Youth Soccer Clinic and Game Practice.
I move that the board of selectmen vote to approve the event request of Nahat Youth Soccer Clinics practices and game schedule.
I will second the motion, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is the board of selectmen to sign the purchase and sale regarding thirty-few Bayview Avenue. Motion?
Um, I move that the board of selectmen vote to execute the purchase and sale agreement and related deed for the approximately two hundred and thirty-five square feet of land in front of thirty-four Bayview Avenue.
I'll second the motion, discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Do, do you wanna do that now, Tony? Or Dan?
Oh, uh, the only person that needs to be here is Paige, so if she doesn't mind waiting, we can wait till after the meeting.
Okay.
That's fine, Paige. Or not. In that case, yeah, we can sign it now, you can sign it now.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Because the deed needs to be notarized, so Paige's a notary, so if you just sign the deed...
Sure.
It's on the screen.
It's ready, yeah?
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, he's got it over here.
Yeah, we're seeing the point.
See?
So we're just gonna notarize the deed. No, no, the, the, this is the PNS, this is the...
You don't have three selectmen to sign it, just two?
Well, we need, we will have, Richie, I'm sorry, Mr. Antrim, sign when he gets back, so you can sign right there, you sign it. No, no, right there.
Oh. I sign right here?
Yep. He's affected.
I'm sorry, are you gonna have the copy?
I will take care of it.
Do I get it?
Um, actually, we, I do.
Yeah.
This is the fifth?
September, right?
That's for George, I believe, yeah, he can sign that one instead.
Okay. There you go.
Yes. Yeah, we're good for you, sir.
All right, okay. All right.
We all set?
Yes.
I'm, the approval of David McCool?
Oh, yeah, okay. That's next, all right.
I move that the board of selectmen vote to approve the appointment of David McCool as a Nahat zoning board of appeals member.
I will second the motion. Discussion? All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay. We're down to ongoing business of the agenda, the Solarize Committee, you wanna handle that?
Yes. So, some time ago, um, I was invited to a meeting in Swampscot by Ellen, Johnny, and Nicole, Ellen Goldberg, Johnny Zimmerman Ward, and Nicole Gogan, and Peter Barnum, is it, right, just joined the, Vernon, okay, just joined the, it's the Solarize Committee, and they have worked really, really hard on this, and, um, we've been approved, we got a, a, a grant to, um, um, to, to bring in a solar, a solar company. I'm gonna let them actually explain to it, but I wanna give them a little round of applause, please, because they've worked very hard. And we have one of them come up and explain whole Solarize. So, Ellen's coming up, all right.
Wait, did you go to the mic?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep, yep, you can face, grab the mic, there you go.
Right here?
That's fine, yeah, that's fine, yep.
Hi, I'm Ellen Goldberg, and I am the vice chair of the Green Communities Committee. I have a team here, Johnny Zimmerman Ward, Nicole Guguin, I got it wrong, and Peter Barnum. We are the Solarize team for Nahat. So, let me tell you just a little bit about what we've done, is, we got here by way of the Green Communities, and we are collaborating with the towns of Salem and Swampscot to create a tri-community campaign for bringing solar to the, to the three towns, and we have, um, let me tell you a little bit, what is solar, and what is Solarize Plus. Solarize is a program, it's a cooperative effort between the state, local officials, solar installers, volunteers like us, and where we all kind of come together to spread the word on environmental and the economic benefits of solar, and we pre-select installers who can provide solar at a scaled level of discount, so the more households that sign up, the more discounts become available for the different installations, and we have gone through the process of submitting an RFP, we have received bids for the towns, we've been working on this since January of this year, to get to the point where we're gonna be able to bring Solarize to the town of Nahat. Um, so, we did put in this joint application to the Massachusetts C.E.C. to be nominated as a Solarize community, in late July, we received a designation, we have received five thousand dollars for marketing initiatives for the town, so that we can do community outreach and educate people on how to sign up, and what the benefits are, and the different technologies that are available. Um, we have signed up for actually a more advanced Solarize campaign than usual. Usually, the initiative is strictly limited to solar PV, we have gone ahead and invited installers to give us bids for solar hot water, as well as air-sourced heat pumps, so that if you're not particularly interested in getting a solar PV installation, but you're ready for a hot water heater, you have the option to bring in solar at a scaled level of discount. Where we are now, we have finished the RFP process, we've received four bids for solar PV, two for solar hot water, two for air-sourced heat pumps, we just got that as of this afternoon. We'll be reviewing the bids over the next couple of weeks, and we should have installer selections done by the end of September. We expect to launch more intensely with our campaign early to mid-October, um, and we have a whole marketing campaign and calendar to bring, you know, to educate everybody here, and to get as many people who are interested, the ability to sign up for solar initiatives for their homes as possible. Um, I can answer any questions, or any member of my team over here can as well.
Can I ask one question? First, um, so, I talked to Tony Parentozzi from the school, and I, you know, 'cause they, they're interested in putting solar on the school.
Yeah.
So, can we, maybe you can email him, put him as part of the chain?
So, it is, it is, the, the bids are for residential, um, but there should be an opportunity to speak to the installers who are selected, to see if we can get additional bids for a commercial installation like the school. I can't guarantee anything, but I do know that we've been working very closely with the state on, you know, the strict requirements for solar, for the, for the bid installers.
I have a question, what's the actual, the average home, there's thirteen hundred homes in the town, um, what's the average cost to solarize?
I don't have the price for that, because it will range depending on the type of installation, and Peter actually could be able to speak to that a little bit more, because he did a solar installation at his house and ran into some complications, so he would have a much better understanding of the pricing that you, that you could run into, depending on the complications. Um, we did choose the, the various levels of technologies because we knew that solar PV in and of itself could be out of reach, and, to many people, and we wanted to be able to bring various levels of technology at different price points, so if you're not really ready for solar PV installation at ten thousand dollars, or whatever it's gonna cost, you know, maybe you could go for the solar hot water, you know, if you're very close to that, or if your furnace is thirty years old, now really would be a good time to look at the air-sourced heat pump, when you have a pre-selected vendor onboard, ready to talk to you.
I, I think it's great, I mean, I think you guys have done it, they have done a tremendous amount of work, Richie, 'cause I'm part of the email chain from Lisa Dobbs from the state, and it's, it's constantly going back and forth, and you've done just a, really a great job, and I, I really, I think that, um, volunteers like this, you know, they're very hard to find, so.
Absolutely, you're, uh, you should be applauded for your efforts, and I, I applaud yours.
Thanks.
And I mean that because, for Enzo to give praise...
It's, it's very exciting, it's very exciting, because, you know, we are all volunteers, and we all just want the best for this town, and we wanna be able to bring the right technology, and we're helping to select the installers who can really provide the best value. Um, and, you know, the teaming up with Swampscot and Salem was key to being able to really, hopefully, get those prices down as much as we can, because you get the, those communities, you know, you get, you get more numbers, and so the price will come down.
Yeah.
So if you're thinking about solar this year, you know, when we launch the campaign, I would really urge you to sign up for the information, come to the meetings, and get us, you know, try and make your decisions based on the installers that we've got, because it's gonna be a very, it's, it's gonna be the best available, and the easiest way to move forward right away, is what I think.
So you'll have a big public meeting for this?
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
We will, we will.
Then would you...
We'll have meetings, we're gonna set up tables, we'll send out flyers, you know, we'll be in touch as soon as this campaign really launches. We did just get the first amount of money that the town should have gotten, so we'll start drawing that down, so that we can prepare materials for people.
You can probably, um, put it on our website?
Yep.
Hopefully?
Yes, we do have a website, solarizednorthshore.org, that is already set up, so you can put your name on that list, solarizednorthshore.org. If you are interested in more information, just put your name on, and we will be in touch, and the installers will be in touch as we move forward with this process.
Good.
Solarizednorthshore.org.
Again, thank you very much for you and your team. We had a question right here.
Uh, I know not everyone knows me, Chris Kowalski, fifty-seven Lennox Road, um, I just have one quick question, our participation in this Solarize, is there any clauses that cause exclusivity, where if we consider solar, we have to go through this program, or are all the other options open?
You don't have to go through this program at all, if you decide...
No, I under, I understand, I wanna make sure, because sometimes when they come in with these sort of contracts, the prices do have clauses, and I'm not necessarily in Massachusetts, other parts of the country, that'll require communities, 'cause it has to do with utilities, I know, we don't own the utilities, I believe here in Nahat, a third-party utility operator does, but in some places where the town owns utilities, they tie any solar contracts with exclusivity, so you couldn't negotiate with, say, another, another solar contractor.
So, the way you've worded the question makes me not wanna give you an exact answer, because I'm not positive, but, uh, because I'm not sure, I have not seen the contract, we haven't selected the installer, and, so therefore, I haven't seen the contract that we would sign with the installer, to see if there's an exclusivity agreement.
That, that would be my one reservation, as it goes around, is that if this locks us in where we can only deal with Solarize, you know, it might seem like a great deal now, but as the market builds, solar gets more popular, it might be more competitive down the road.
I will say that it's only for, it's a limited time, so it's, it's like, for like, six months?
Oh, okay.
Six months?
Fair enough.
Yeah, like, we're running a campaign so that we can encourage solar installations within a short period of time.
No.
At that point, it's over, people who sign up get that contracted rate, then they go for their installations, that have to be done within a certain period of time to get that price, if they don't go through with it, they don't get the price, they don't get the solar, everybody moves on.
You know, I absolutely understand buying in bulk, you know, that sort of deal, it's a great idea, a great thing to support, I've been looking into solar myself, so it's certainly someone I look at, I just wanna make sure it didn't close other doors or other avenues to, again, get competitive bids.
So, again, it might for that six months, I don't think it will, but it might for that six months, but it does not do so after that period of time, for sure.
I just think that's something worth considering.
And we'll definitely find that out for one of those public meetings, that's an excellent point, thank you.
Thank you. And I think it's just that, you know, it's an avenue, the other thing is an avenue for people that don't know much about sol, solar energy, 'cause I've had them knock at my door, and you don't know who to trust, you know, so, at least this way here, we have a committee that's dedicated to this, and they're gonna pick the right, you know, well, the right person will be picked, the right company will be picked.
Any other questions? Thanks for your attention.
Thank you.
Great, nice job.
Thank you.
Town administrator's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, first on the list is a status update to the rights of ways progress that the town has been making. Over the last month or two, the town has sent out letters to abudders of public right-of-ways in Little Nahat, and has made an effort to schedule times to go to those residents, go to those, uh, right-of-ways, and speak with the directive abudders about the existing right-of-way, and take a look at what the, what encroachments might exist, or what types of resolutions we could start thinking about in order to open access to any of the right-of-ways that don't have open access to them. Many residents responded to that letter, and scheduled, um, on August twentieth, we were, Dan Scrip and I were able to meet... Dan Scrip and I were able to meet with many of those butters. I think, Dan, we visited about six different right-of-ways over those two weeks.
Right, we did. There's only one, actually, of all the right-of-ways we sent off, there's only one that's still in question in terms of the participation of the landowner. So it's been a very successful and very positive response. They've been really, really responsive and very helpful.
I think, you know, going out and taking a look at each one of these right-of-ways, every single one of them is unique. You know, some have, you know, some are ten feet wide, some are one foot wide, some are, have encroachments that can't be resolved, and some, some have encroachments that can be.
What do you mean, that can't be resolved?
You know, you have some encroachments that include a foundation of a home.
Oh.
A brick wall, you know, or maybe, maybe I shouldn't say can't be resolved, but more difficult to be resolved. Some are, you know, you're just talking about a garden bed or a fence. You know, certainly we have to take into consideration, if the town is to open some of these right-of-ways, what we'll do, what we'll have to do in order to protect residents at the end of that right-of-way, because some of these, you know, lead right to the edge of Little Nahat, where it's pretty dangerous. So those are things that we're going to have to consider going forward. We've also let residents know that we were going to be speaking about this tonight at, at this meeting, and I don't know if any are here tonight, but would be happy to open, open the floor up to them if they have any, anything they'd like to say to, to the board at this time.
My name is George Mahoven. I live over sixty-four Lennox Road, over in Little Nahat, and I'm here to talk about some of the rights of ways. I have to agree with you, some of them are a little more difficult to get down to the ocean than others. But to hear you say that it's dangerous over in Little Nahat, and not take into account that over in Big Nahat, there's rights of ways, there's falling steps, there's dead mans, there's all kinds of places around there that people have access to go out there and do all these things. You're telling me that it's too dangerous for me to go down there? Then why aren't you telling all the people around, rest of Nahat, that it's too dangerous to go up to East Point, Bass Point, climb down the rocks to go fishing? I don't think that's right. That right-of-way we've been talking about has been a, a great place to go fishing, a great place to go swimming. The person who bought the property laid a driveway ten feet over the, his line or her line, shame on the town for not doing anything. There wasn't sort of stairs there, and over the years, one of the abutters made it kind of their, her project, to make that right-of-way as inaccessible as possible. And I would like to see the town do something about it. It's been there since I've been in this town, and I would like to see my son, or my grandchildren, and any other children, or adults, go down there, enjoy one of the few accesses we do have over Little Nahat to the water, versus Big Nahat, where you have accesses all over the place. Thank you.
You know, I agree with George on this. I don't understand where the dangerous part came in. And there's dangers everywhere. I mean, if you walk, there's, there's supposed to be a right-of-way around the whole town, as far as I know. And I know that we've had these problems before, but that right-of-way up in Little Nahat has to be opened up. And I think what they need to do is just go after the deed, and just put it on the deed, so they can't sell it until they, they fix that right-of-way. I mean, that's, that's what I would do. Somehow flag the deed, because this will just continue, and continue, and continue, and we have to open that right-of-way up. It's like the town steps, there was people that were taking parts of the town steps over. You can't do that either. I mean, they've been there for a million years, and you gotta have, you just have to have them. I mean, it's, it's been deeded that way, leave it that way. Well, you still can. You can get down there and fish, you can walk right through a yard, I mean.
Mr. Mahoven, can you, can you, can you get to the microphone, please?
I think, I think, and I think Tony's working on putting, painting, you know, marking it, and putting the rights of ways there. So, and he's, you know, we, we are working on it. We're not, you know, we're not, not dragging our heels, this has been a long time coming. He's doing a good job, he's working with a town attorney that we have to have if we're going to do this right, to, and again, I'm not a landlord, so, and I'm not a lawyer, so. Yeah, no, we'll, we'll get it done. He'll get it done, Tony will get it done. I'm confident, so.
Chris Kowalski, once again, fifty-seven Lennox. The day that you guys painted the street to mark off that right-of-way, I went down there, all the way to the water's edge. Part of the reason why we bought in Nahat was, I'm a diehard fisherman, so was my wife. It's a gnarly trek down to the water there. I get it, it is dangerous, but it's certainly no more dangerous than any of the other spots I fish, be it East Point, Castle Rock, even some parts of Bailey Hill can get real tricky. But it's certainly accessible. The previous owner, I don't know if she's here or not, but she did everything in her power to keep people out of there. Like you said, they built a driveway, there's about an eight-foot drop on a concrete wall. You can see the existing anchors. The stairs themselves are buried under about a foot of weeds at the base of the wall. There's, put a number of trash down there, there is like little tomato fences, pots, we found an old kayak, as well as other trash and debris that, in my opinion, were purposely strewn there to convince people not to go that way. It is a dangerous walk, but it's certainly something people should be able to do if they want to do it. It's a big part of the character and the culture in Nahat, and that's part of the reason why I'm here. And when I realized that that access, as well as other rights of ways, were really not open, it was certainly disheartening for me and my wife. And I'm encouraged to see that there is motion on these things. I know that there's a number of committees, a number of people that are working on this. I mean, I myself would volunteer to help clear that area. I've had some discussions with other people in the town about what we could do, whether it's just simply weed whacking and hauling out some of the brush and debris. But again, we had reservations, because it's, you know, us doing work on town property. So I just, I want to throw my hat in the ring, if you will, that me and a couple other people would be more than happy to, to help move this along, and when you need manpower, labor, because it's a big part of restoring the character of Nahat. So thank you guys for considering it.
Just, just be careful about removing brush. You don't want to destabilize the bank.
Absolutely. Like I said, we haven't done anything, we've pondered it, but again, we're, we don't want to make any moves that would put ourselves in any sort of jeopardy.
That's great, Chris. One thing that we were discussing preliminarily is, we have a new open space committee. They have a lot on their plate, but potentially getting them involved in the right-of-way movement, because, you know, it doesn't just exist in Little Nahat, or even just on the coast of Little Nahat, it's the inland parts of Little Nahat, and then of course, in Big Nahat too. So there's a lot, right-of-ways that we have some encroachments on that we have to deal with. So happy to hear you're willing to volunteer. I know there are a few others that have voiced their willingness to volunteer and help that committee. I don't know, maybe we can create a subcommittee or team to help that open space committee out with this. But I don't, I don't want to paint the picture that I'm against it at all, or, you know, I think that, like I said, each one of these are, are different. They're, the one at the tip of Little Nahat, actually, I think is, falls under the category of easier to resolve.
I believe that's town property, too.
It is, the right-of-way?
Yeah.
Yeah, of course.
I mean, it's not, like, it's not an easement, is what I'm saying. Some people have easements on their property as a right-of-way.
No, it's a, yeah.
Right. So if they encroach on town property, we have to remedy that.
I'm just simply saying that we, we, we have to consider that as we move forward. So I think the next step is to meet with some of these, the last one, I think, and then maybe put together a, you know, Dan took some pictures of the areas, put together some recommendations for the board to take a look at, and then negotiate some type of resolution with the abutters, or, you know, folks that have encroached on how to resolve those situations. So we're definitely making a lot of progress, and I think we got some pretty good feedback from the abutters. That, that one at, actually, the one at the tip of Little Nahat is being, is, is engaged with us multiple times already, and is very willing to sit at the table and talk about a way to open that up, so. And it is in the, it is attached to their posting of the, of the sale of the home, that...
Yeah, there is notice of that.
There's notice of that in the sale, posting, that, that there's a right-of-way there, and that there, that could change, and that the, the way that the driveway is set up right now could be changed in the future.
Okay.
Because the town's actively engaging in opening the right-of-way.
Enzo, if I may put a finer point on what Tony mentioned, there are two right-of-ways which are literally just drop-offs. The one at seventy-nine Nahat, Little, Little Nahat Road goes to a fence, and then literally is a sheer drop-off, I think, to twenty feet.
More, probably.
So, and that's not even close to the water yet. And then there's another tier, and there's another drop-off at another twenty feet. So when Tony mentions it's dangerous to get down to these rocks, there's no better description of it, because it just drops right off. And you can imagine a kid there at night, you know, a moonless night with some, some clouds, you can't even see that drop-off. So that's a concern, I think, that we all have. Very similar is the right-of-way at two zero two Wilson. That drops off even further. And I think everyone in that walk on August twentieth kind of agreed that this one is kind of ridiculous to try to, to remedy. But in any event, as Tony mentioned, they're all unique, and more often than not, they can be brought back to where they were originally.
So what happened, there were stairs there before?
That's a mystery. A resident, yeah, right, at two fifty Wilson Road, there were definitely stairs, there's no question.
Well, I remember them, I can remember them. Yeah, I can remember them.
We have, we have pictures of the stairs being there in oh nine, and then we have pictures, there's actually pictures online from Google Street View of that property, and the stairs are no longer there from two thousand and eleven. So sometime, we know sometime between oh nine and eleven, the stairs were removed.
Right, and they couldn't have been that old, because seventy-eight, they must have got destroyed, ninety-one, they must have got destroyed.
These are stairs, these aren't stairs down to the rocks.
No, I know.
These are stairs from the driveway down to the, the second layer, if you will, of the right-of-way. Not really, not really open to the elements of waves, wave action, you know, it's pretty close to the street.
We need to bring back the boardwalk, Richard.
I remember that boardwalk very well.
So don't I.
Went all the way around that Little Nahat.
So Dan and I will continue to meet with the residents and put together a, a recommend, a list of recommendations to put in front of the board to consider, and regarding Little Nahat. And then I think it'll be, I think it's, it's a, it's a massive undertaking, this has taken a lot of time, and I think that encouraging a committee to get involved and, and, and move forward from there would be helpful.
I think the planning was, aren't they supposed to do a perambulation? It's on their agenda.
I, I heard about it, but I don't want to speak for them. I think, I think they were, I think Josh and Selectman Antrim had also mentioned putting that back together, too.
Okay.
Local meals tax, any, any questions on that before we move to the next one, Mr. Chairman? Okay, next on the list is the local meals tax option, uh, uh, update. So this was voted in by town meeting at the last annual town meeting, and the Department of Revenue is going to be sending letters out to local businesses that this meals tax would apply to. It's going to go into effect starting in October. For those who don't remember, or recall, or weren't around at the time, the, we estimate the local meals tax option, if we had adopted it in two thousand and nine, when we were, when we were eligible to do it, we, we would have received over three million dollars' worth of revenue by this point.
Wow.
And we believe that the, we could average somewhere between forty and sixty thousand dollars in revenue on an annual basis. Obviously, this year, it's starting in October, so it'll be a little bit lower in the first year. But we, the town will also be sending letters out to those same business owners to let them know that this, this is going to be coming.
And they don't, it's, it's all calculated into their, and the state takes care of it, right?
Right, so you have a current sales tax of six point two five.
Right.
This is going to make that a total of seven. So the customer pays that tax, and it just gets filtered through the business to the state. State then sends us a quarterly check.
Nice.
So that's another great benefit of the, of the meals, of the meals, local meals tax option, is that it adds no administrative burden to the town, and it also is one of our only revenue streams that does not, isn't completely provided by the residents of the, of the town. This is going to be able to capture some revenue of folks who come into the town who don't live here. Prepared food, prepared food. So it wouldn't be a convenience store, if you bought a bag of chips, it's not like that, it's prepared food, so it's like... Uh, yeah, probably. Yeah, add to the bottom of your bill, to the end of your bill. So, yeah, restaurants, function halls, anything like that. Next is beach water testing. I wanted to add this to the agenda, because we, there was, there's been some news about poor beach water quality at Kings Beach along the, along Lynn Shore Drive, and a few times it actually was mentioned in the media and called Nahat Beach. And so we had gotten a lot of questions from the residents about if that meant our beaches or not. It did not. Actually, we tested the beaches throughout the summer, and we didn't receive one bad reading, or even close to a bad reading throughout, we had a perfect year. The beaches that we test are Short Beach, Black Rock Beach, Tudor Beach, and Forty Steps. We, the town in Nahat tests them, tests the beaches from Memorial Day to Labor Day, and then the state actually tests or pays for our testing between June and August. So we actually extend that testing timeframe to make sure that the beaches are clean for residents. So we do have this, these are, it's tested weekly, we post the results of these tests on our website. Hopefully, we can, we're, we're working on improving our website and making it more user-friendly, so that, you know, folks can easily look online to see if we've had any type of negative test. But typically, if we did, like, two, not this past summer, but the summer prior, we would notify the town publicly. So wanted to clear that, clear that up, and announce that we had a, a perfect season as far as water quality went. The next thing on the list is stop yield signs at Bass Point Road and Castle Road. We had some complaints or concerns, constituent requests, to look at the signage in the, where Castle Road meets Bass Point and splits to, towards Goddard, towards Trimount, towards Bass Point Road, Kobe. Lack of signage in that area, and folks, you know, a couple of close calls over there. We are, I think, because of the comp, the complicated setup of how many streets enter that bottleneck area, I think what I'm going to try to do is try and see if we can have some extra, find some extra money, or maybe a reserve fund transfer for professional services to maybe have a traffic engineer take a look at that setup and make some recommendations for the town as far as what type of signage we could improve and where. And along those lines, we've also had, we had another incident on Nahat Road by Little Nahat, where the Little Nahat Playground is. A few months ago, a dog had been struck and killed, and then just last week, we, another dog had ran off of the beach, off its leash. Luckily, fortunately, did not, did not die, but was, did strike a vehicle as they were passing by. So we do have, we definitely have an issue there with folks, more so coming into Nahat and coming off of the causeway and still speeding. And there is a lot of constituents looking to ask the town to incorporate a crosswalk there, or other measures to try and slow traffic down in that area. So that's, could be something else that we could include in the scope of work for the, a traffic engineer to take a look at, because of the sightlines coming over the hill.
Right.
You know, we want to make sure that it's placed in the correct spot, and, you know, it's... You know, we want to make sure that it's placed in the correct spot and, um, you know, is safe for people to cross the road and so. Hopefully we can find some funds there or maybe go for a reserve fund transfer, uh, or add it into the upcoming town budget for some professional services to help with that.
Um, I, well, we did lower the speed limit to twenty-five. Um, I just think that, you know, I mean, people, you have to realize you can't, you gotta watch your dog, leash him. Because if they're going to run on the street, they're gonna, it doesn't matter where they are, they're gonna get hit.
Certainly a crosswalk wouldn't have prevented either of those things, but it may cause drivers to slow down a little bit and pay closer attention and that could lead to-
I'm not objected to a crosswalk, I, I, it needs to be down further from that hill because people coming over the hill, if somebody's in that crosswalk, there's going to be, you can't see.
Exactly.
So if you put it down a little bit further, then they have an opportunity to stop for the person that's in front of them.
That's a dangerous spot, coming over that hill and, uh, having a crosswalk at the end. Uh, in fact, I brought up the, uh, point about Castle Road and the neighbors up there. We, you know, they come around that curve from Bass Point Apartments and on the castle and, um, and, uh, it's, uh, there's no stop sign, no yield sign, so Tony and I discussed that and then we all dis-, also discussed the, um, Little Nahat situation. And we, what we agreed, we're going to bring in some experts to look at that, safety experts to look at that. I, you know, a crosswalk at that, coming over that hill, uh, in Little Nahat is, ooh, very dangerous. I just, you know, especially at night, people get used to a crosswalk, that, I, I, I'm not sure what we can do there.
One thing that we are looking at is, um, many would be familiar with the, on the pole at the top of Castle Road, we have a digital radar, uh, speed limit sign there. We're going to be purchasing, um, one of those to potent, to add in that area and hopefully that'll help as well. Uh, we're looking, we're, we're looking into different ways to slow people down in that area.
Yeah.
Actually, we could definitely look into that. Yeah, yeah, we could look into that.
Maybe we'll put a spare cruiser there, you know, with a dummy in it, just sitting there, you know. Okay, anything else, Tony?
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. How many people are going to hear, show me a raise your hands, uh, going to speak at the, uh, Citizens Forum? Okay. It's going to be Citizens Forum and since I saw your hand first, I'm going to take, pick on you.
Um, Brent O'Connor, eleven B Seabreeze Lane, um, as many of, of you may know, I had a, uh, very unfortunate incident, um, that occurred on Sunday, June twenty-third at the Nahat Lifesaving Station. Um, I was down Shore Beach with my partners as well as family and friends when I was acco-, when I was accosted on the beach by an employee of the Nahat Preservation Trust. As a person with a disability, I parked with my five-year disability placard, um, at the Nahat Lifesaving Station. I was told by the officer in detail that it was okay to park near the public restrooms. This land is owned by the Town of Nahat and is leased for cated function and as a post for Nahat veterans. The law states that a handicap placard with the, the additional purchase of a city or town's parking sticker supersedes all parking rules. Me and I had every right to park at the Lifesaving Station. Although the Town of Nahat chooses to rent it out for cated functions, it is still owned and managed by elected officials of the taxpayers of Nahat. The actions and words that this employee displays are beyond detestable and were humiliating to me as a person who suffers from a disability. This employee walked onto the beach and brought the officer in detail, whom was a great example of the law and tried to mediate the situation. My relative went to try and remediate the situation in regards to my disability and the only thing that this employee stated was, "If I let everyone park here with a handicap placard, there would be no spaces." This was said more than once in front of the entire beach. After I spoke with the president, president of the Nahat Preservation Trust, I received an email from the employee. To be clear, this conversation was not taken out of context or misconstrued. I have a copy of the, um, the email for you guys to read. This is beyond offensive and discriminatory towards per-, to, towards a person with a disability. I asked the question, "Who gives this employee of the Nahat Preservation Trust the authority to speak like that to a person with a disability?" And will there be, and, and will there be no ramifications of this employee of Nahat? If the taxpayers of Nahat own this, why should I be treated like this? The po-, the employee also stated, "Why can't he be dropped off like everyone else?" To be clear, I'm not like everyone else. Four years ago, I was diagnosed with a progressive chronic debilitating form of multiple sclerosis. I won't get into detail about the preparations I have to take to even get to the beach. My next question is whether the Town of Nahat will designate the parking spots near the Nahat Lifesaving Stations, public restrooms to be accessible to the residents of Nahat that have disabilities. Currently, there is only one accessible spot across the street, which is a fire walk for any person with a disability. Thank you.
Um, Richie?
Yeah, I, he came to me and he, he showed me the letter and I was quite upset with the individual down at Preservation Trust. We were only after him. And, um, especially coming on the beach with a police officer, I was very appalled at that. And I asked Tony to intervene with Preservation Trust to have her, have her apologize to you. And I'm not sure that's the extent of this, now I see you up here tonight, obviously that didn't take place. And then I started thinking, maybe what we need to do is move that fence over or put, um, some handicap park on because it's, uh, close to the bathroom. And, um, I remember we put that in, the original, um, handicap for Richie, uh, one of the members of the community who had lost his leg and he liked to go to the beach. And I know we put that, we ordered to put the handicap parking. And, and now all of a sudden Preservation Trust has taken it over and I don't think it's fair to the handicap people because they, they say they can park across the street. Well, that's not good enough for me, for parking across the street where the handicap parking is. We should have handicap right at the beach so you can walk up on, and especially next to the bathroom. So I think the board needs to look at, Tony, on the agenda, uh, look at reviewing the status of Preservation Trust. The town does own that land, I know we leased it to the Preservation Trust, but we need to think about what the handicaps access, uh, status is and, uh, and make some sort of, uh, allocation of handicap parking because, um, you can see it's severely handicapped and there's other people that go to the beach that are handicapped as well. So I, I move tonight that we take a look at this problem and, uh, sit down with Preservation People to ensure that, number one, this doesn't happen again. Number two, that we have sufficient handicap parking next to the beach and next to the bathroom so that the individuals that are handicapped get down to the beach and also next to that bathroom.
Um, quite frankly, I was appalled, I mean, he's a, I mean, his family has been here for a couple hundred years, I think. He looks a couple hundred years old. I'm just kidding with you. Um, I don't think it was right. I go by that place all the time, I see cars pulling in there all the time, uh, dropping people off, parking cars in there and I don't know who they are, but to single out you and the officer told you you could park there was wrong. And we do have to look at that and we do have to sit down with the Preservation Trust and designate some spaces for handicap access. And I'm sorry that that happened to you, Brent, I, I real-, I really am. Um, I called you, I know I called you late because I kept losing your telephone number. But, um, I just think it's, uh, wrong that it happened to him. Especially to the, upon his, uh, widely known name in the town, I mean, it's, they've been here for a long time and, um, it just isn't right, uh, that, that it happened. And I know, the other thing I want to bring up about that is Ruthie Titus has been asking for a railing so she can get down the beach. Now, we have railings on the other two, okay, uh, on, down on Spring Road, across some lowlands, but this needs to have another one, we need to have another railing and, um, that goes down from, from that access point at the, uh, Lifesaving Station so that people, the elderly people that don't have, uh, not great on their legs, and I'm one of them, don't fall. I'm just kidding with you, no. No, I'm just saying, just, no, the railing has to go up, there should be a railing there. Right, and, and the he-, you know, that's, that's another part of it, um, I'm getting to. The, the elderly want something there, a railing to go down to that beach. And it should be there, if, if there's two others, you need a third one because that's an access point. And, um, and it has to be handicapped access. Period.
We need to come up with a better plan-
Right.
-for that down there. And we've got plenty of time before the next beach season, so. We'll work on that and have, come back to you. Okay?
Yeah, I just, I just hope the Nahat Preservation Trust too can better understand that it's, you know, this woman, this person, to get down the beach and really be awesome and, and she'll think she works for someone. And that's usually a couple of, a month, a month time ago, but it's just unreal and she doesn't think that she did anything wrong. So that's an indication for me.
Well.
I have a question as well, Lee, you said employee, the woman who talks to you like that.
She, she works for the town of Nahat.
So she, she must get a job from the Nahat Preservation Trust, right?
Yes, she does actually, she works for them, I, I think.
Well, we own it, we own the property and, you know, there should be, there should be some kind of restriction, not a restriction, but some kind of wor-, uh, wording in there that-
Well, I have a problem with that, there's a person standing, this person is representing this.
That's right.
She still is, but I understand that. My family being here, it's a, it's a, somebody can say that.
Well, they are, they have been.
I would say, well, they take that flag, it's because they're not a preservation group.
We've got Hawkeye.
One, one thing we're missing out here, the Preservation Trust is not a town entity. It's a completely different organization. It's its own corporation, it's owned filed with the Secretary of State. This woman was not a town employee, she wasn't a town volunteer, she was a volunteer for the corporation. Well, as, as reprehensible as- That might be true, but in terms of the Pres-, Preservation Trust, that is not a town organization.
It's a, it's a nonprofit organization.
Right, I agree. But it, just because- Yeah. But that being said, that's no excuse for what happened.
None, none whatsoever. I think we need the Board of Select, we need to meet with the Preservation Trust people and Tony and their attorney to make sure that this doesn't happen again. If need be, we'll make some changes down there. Town owns that property and, uh, they lease it from us and we can make some changes. Yeah, that, well, send a message so it doesn't happen again, uh, I'll be honest with you.
It might not happen again.
Believe me, if it happens again, uh, I, I, I'll move to take that property back from them and have them put it back in the town home, you know, as it's, this, this is, that was a disgrace. And I assumed I, that individual that was handling that was, was supposed to apologize to him and I, I understand that, uh, she wrote him a letter, but it's, uh, the way she wrote it, it was just not acceptable. Okay, um, you're next. You were, you had your hand, you kept, you were a little slow with the hand coming out, but I, I want to let you know that.
Thank you. Uh, so I've been asked by a friend of mine who's, uh, very ill, she has a bronchial infection, she's not able to attend tonight, but she asked me to read this letter on her behalf. This letter is dated today and it's specifically, um, in response to the, um, zoning board of appeals appointment which was made. Um, this individual, my friend, is trying to be a volunteer for the zoning board of appeals and has been working on this since, uh, March of this year and is a bit confused and, and, um, doesn't understand why, um, her appointment was not, uh, processed more quickly. So if I could, I'd just read her letter and I'll try to be quick.
We have a copy of it.
I, I gave you copies of it at the start.
Yeah, he has a copy, yeah.
I'll, I'll try to be quick though, because I, I think, I just think it's important for everybody to understand what she's been through to try to volunteer her time for the town. It's addressed to the Selectman, it says, "Dear sirs, I read in the agenda for tonight's Board of Select meeting that there is a motion to approve a new member of the Z, zoning board of appeals. I request this measure be tabled until the criteria and process for selection to the ZBA is made transparent. The current process seems unprofessional, opaque, arbitrary and unlikely to encourage citizen participation. I still do wish to serve on the ZBA however. I offer the following timeline for your view. In March thirteenth, I was told by the town clerk of an opening for a volunteer, uh, seat at the ZBA and I was given the chair's contact info. The same day, I contacted Jocelyn Campbell, the ZBA chair. The next day, I attended the ZBA meeting. I contacted, uh, Jocelyn and I was contacted by Jocelyn with the next meeting date and I let her know that I'd be interested in joining the ZBA. Jocelyn formally let me know, "You will receive an appointment letter in the mail and you will need to go to the town hall and be sworn in by Peggy."
Can I, can I just stop you right there?
Yes.
She has no authority to do that.
Okay, well, this is the-
She has none, it's the Board of Select, that, that appoint, they're appointing authority.
I think you'll see later on in the letter, yeah.
If I might, um, I'm happy to have a conversation with Ms. Cahill, happy to reach out to her and have a one-on-one conversation. I don't really appreciate that the process that I'm employing be con-, uh, considered unprofessional, opaque, arbitrary or unlikely to encourage citizen participation. The pers-, the process I'm employing hasn't even been finalized yet. This current situation is the ZBA chairwoman came to me and said, "We are in dire need of a, of a new member before next week because there's a meeting on September eleventh that they need a quorum for." I, when a chairwoman or chairman comes to me with an urgent situation, I'm going to consider that and that's what I did. I am very appreciative of Ms. Cahill's dedication to the town and desire to be, to volunteer for a committee. Uh, and I'm happy to sit down with her and talk to her about other opportunities. This is not one of those, uh, situations and I, you know, I don't think that this is an accurate characterization of what occurred.
And we, we're going to appoint someone to the Board of Appeals tonight. We have his name right here.
I, I understand that.
And, and I, I know him very well, he's an attorney. And, uh, I'm going to put into motion, in fact, uh, I'll make the motion right now.
What, David McCool?
He's already been appointed.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
So, so I guess, um, Ms. Cahill, from my understanding, uh, Ms. Cahill's concern is just that she was told from the beginning, "Yes, you'll be considered." She, she filed the application, uh, with, with, uh, the town and she also went through the, the two-day training process that was required. And nobody's ever said to her at any point along the way that she didn't have, um, the credentials that were required for the job. I mean, I, I'm sure she'd wish that if that was the case and you felt like she wasn't qualified, that you just said to her at the beginning, "I'm sorry, I'm not qualified" and she wouldn't have wasted her time, so.
Again, I don't want to, Ms. Cahill's not here, so I'm not gonna, I don't want to get into this conversation without her being present. I'm happy to talk to her about it.
Where was your training?
I did have a conversation with Ms. Cahill. We talked about how the training for ZBA members and planning board members and it was open to the public.
Downstairs?
It was not a requirement, she volunteered to go through that. She understood that there was no, um, you know, if she went through it, that there was any type of commitment for her to become the next ZBA member, there was nothing, there was, it was understood that that was an, um, an option for her to volunteer her time to go through it if she would like to. I encouraged her to because there could be other opportunities for her to get involved. In this, this situation, David McCool's appointment has, has nothing to do with this situation and I, and I, and I'm happy to talk to her about it, I don't want to, again, she's not here, so I don't-
Right, I just think-
I'm uncomfortable, um, going back and forth with you about the things that are written in this letter.
I understand, I think the only question, Tony, is, it's important for all citizens because obviously this town thrives on volunteers and was very important to have volunteers with the committee. It's important for volunteers who are considering it to understand what the process is. And I think that's what's not clear and that's- because obviously this town thrives on volunteers and was very important to have volunteers with the committee. It's important for volunteers who are considering it to understand what the process is. And I think that's what's not clear and that's what she's pointing out in her letter. It's just not clear what the process is.
You, you realize that some of the stuff in here is accusatory.
Well, I didn't write the letter. This is her recollection of what happened and, and I'm going to take her at her word.
The process isn't defined at this point. I've, you know, I, it's, we're still in the process of assessing the membership of all committees and committee members' status, whether they're, um, active, whether they've taken an ethics test, whether they've been sworn in by the clerk, whether they are actually attending meetings, whether committees are taking minutes and appropriately recording those. So it's a massive assessment that we're trying to undertake, which will then lead to potential recruitment of volunteers for open spots, for committee fair, for group trainings. That's what the process could look like going forward, but it's still undefined. In this scenario, a chairwoman approached me with an urgent need for a filling of a spot because of lack of quorum for a meeting next week. And this was the last time we were going to meet, um, prior to that ZBA meeting and I need, needed the board's approval. Again, I really would feel more comfortable having this conversation one-on-one with Ms. Cahill. I, I feel uncomfortable having it without her be here to speak on her own behalf. Okay?
I, I understand that. Just going back to the, what I said earlier though, I feel for any of us who volunteers and the citizens of this town who might want to be on a committee. It's important for us to understand what the process is because guess what? I might want to be on FinCon, but based on what you're saying, I have no idea how the process works. And that kind of, why would I waste my time then? So I think it's just, the more transparent you guys can be, I think that's really important.
As soon as the process is defined, we will make sure that that's available to people. What I'm telling you is that it isn't yet.
But in the meantime, you're making appointments to the board, so it's a little bit, you know.
Well, can this individual have asked us to be on the board?
Right.
I've never heard, her, her requests has never come to me. You know, I'm, you know, I didn't know, you know, usually someone asks me to be appointed to something and if it's the, uh, finance committee, uh, the chairman of the finance committee and the town manager. You go to them and ask them, you know, gee, I'd like to be considered. That's all. It's very simple. It's not something that's, uh, you know, a hidden agenda. You know, they ask the people who want to be on a committee. There's no problem. Someone's got, I, I didn't even, this is the first time I've heard about this, this woman tonight. I had no idea that she was applying.
Well, she did, she did go to the ZBA chair. It sounds like she did things according to the book.
Say it again?
I'm sorry?
I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
She went to the ZBA chair and asked about the process. So I understand that it's Tony that appoints them.
It's, it's not, it's the board of select and the town administrator that appoints. It's not, it had nothing to do with her. She shouldn't have really jumped the gun on that. Um, and I, I understand the predicament she was in and Jocelyn does a great job. Um, but again, I, I don't think, I, I knew nothing, I didn't know, understand, I didn't know that Candace was applying for the job. I know Mr. McCool was.
There is no, there.
I gotta, I have one guy that's been after me since I became a selectman. It'll be six years coming up, um, that wants to be on a committee.
Let me be clear. There, I, no one has expressed to me any formal process to appoint members to a committee, ever in this town. So I'm starting from scratch.
Yeah.
Okay? So my first task is to assess what spots need to be filled, what committees have openings. That's what I'm trying to do. There is no application. There is no standard, go to the chairwoman, go to the board, go to the town administrator, go to the clerk. There is no standard process. There is none. So I'm attempting to create one and, and going to encourage folks to get involved in that. And I don't want this to turn people away from wanting to be a volunteer. I don't want Ms. Cahill to be turned away from being, from volunteering. I appreciate everything she did and went through to be involved in the town. This is a different situation though.
Mostly, you know something? Honestly, I'm going to be very upfront with you. I don't want divided loyalties. I really don't. Because I'm getting tired of it.
What do you mean by that?
I want the democratic process to take place in this town. Period. Okay? I don't want plants. I don't want any of that stuff. Divided loyalties, you know exactly what I'm talking about.
Uh, actually, can you be more explicit?
Divided loyalties means that, you know, why all of a sudden does somebody want to be on a board?
She wants to serve the town, from what I understand.
Okay.
Peter O'Gall, three ninety-one Nahant Road. Um, I knew that Candace was going through this process and, um, I think it's too bad that all of you didn't know that. Um, but my assessment, this is more on a human scale and really has nothing to do with anything that you got, that anyways we're talking about here is, you have a citizen who went to the government, not everybody, because she doesn't know that she probably should. And I haven't talked to her about this tonight. I just found out about this. Um, and she believed that she was doing the right thing by getting feedback from a chair, Tony, whoever. And she went and acted and sat in meetings that no one would sit in unless they, I mean, why would she keep going to these meetings unless she thought she would learn something? Let's be real about this. She got educated more because she was told she should do it. I don't know her schedule, but she must have better things to do unless she had a goal to be on this committee and she was told there's a spot. So to find out after anybody goes through this process as a volunteer and then they find out they weren't selected, um, that's what this is about. That's all this is about, is she wanted to do something. She followed through and she did nothing wrong. She should never be criticized because all she did was try to join a committee.
No, no one said that she did anything wrong.
Who's criticizing? No one's criticizing.
Didn't you just say something about a plant? No, divided loyalties, Peter. Let's, let's face.
Candace has a divided loyalty?
Well, I don't know.
Oh, you suggested it.
Mr. McCool, I believe, is, he's a lawyer. He's, he's got more, Candace is a smart girl, smart woman. But she's also, uh, Dave McCool is also a land use attorney. Why wouldn't we use him on the ZBA?
Dave McCool, I'm sure is a great guy.
I, I don't really know him, but I can tell you that his qualifications are unbelievable.
He's probably a great guy. The point is that Candace, the point is Candace is not a plant.
Hold on. I mean.
A plant?
She's, I, I don't know what that's all about, but, I mean, no one asked me, as chairman of the board of selectmen, I would think they come to the chairman of the board of selectmen and say, gee, uh, you're gonna know who's appointing. The board of selectmen makes the appointment.
Right, but we just said there's no procedure.
It's, it's, it's the town administrator in this one.
And the town administrator, well, we, we can recommend it, we can recommend it. He would be, if we recommend someone to him, he most likely is going to appoint him.
So Candace was remiss not going to more people on the board?
She never asked me.
Candace was not remiss.
Never asked me either.
Let me, let me be very, Candace was not remiss on anything. She did nothing wrong. She's not out of the running of being a member on a committee. It has nothing to do with this appointment of Mr. McCool. It is, I, I dislike the way that she's characterizing the process as unprofessional, but that being said, that doesn't mean she's not in the running to be a member of a, or be a committee member in the future. She's spent a lot of time working towards that. This, this is not that type of situation. And I don't, I don't, I feel like this conversation's going, getting to, going down the wrong road and almost turning people away from.
No, no, Tony, let me be clear. Let me be clear.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Please, I, I'm.
I don't want, I don't want to, I don't want to discuss this any further.
Okay.
Okay? That's the ballgame in that. I, I really don't want, I really don't want to get involved in this.
How many people did we have sign up for the, uh, the, um?
You know, it's just.
All firefighters. That you had to churn down.
Three.
So we had, I mean, there's people that get churned down all the time.
I have three, I, I think I have three, maybe four people asking to get on the ZBA right now.
Yeah.
At this moment.
Yeah.
Three, three or four more people that want to be on the ZBA?
Yes.
How many openings do you have?
Uh, one full-time and then I'm trying to figure out how many other openings there are as far as alternate members or on other committees. That's what I'm trying to.
Okay, it's called, who else was on the, uh, yes?
Hi, I'm Peter Gallochi from twenty Simmons Road. Uh, my property's on the corner of Simmons and Lennox Road. I'm disappointed that my other Lennox Road people left. Um, I came to talk about skunks.
Skunks?
Skunks. We have skunks everywhere. All summer, at least three, four, sometimes five nights a week, you had to close all your windows because the skunk smell is so strong. Many times, we look out, we see them running down the street, cutting across the lawn, going here and, here and there. Um, two incidents in two weeks. This past weekend, I was at dinner, uh, at a neighbor's house, twenty-two Lennox, and, uh, as me and my family were leaving, we came out, opened the door and looked right in his yard, right to the side, and there were four little skunks, like eating seeds or whatever. And then as we slid out and crossed the street, I went up to my front door and my daughter, who had the flashlights, said, "Hold on, we got a skunk," right in front of my front door, right in front of my front porch. So I thought, we'll outsmart these skunks. We'll go around to my basement door and go in through that way. We go around that way and there's another one on my patio. Now, on my property, I've got no shed that I can go under. I've got no bushes for them to live in. I don't have any overgrown anything. I have a garage door that's tight as a drum. I've got no place for skunks to live on my property. So that was last weekend. The weekend before, we were out and there was two skunks on Lennox Road, um, just down from twenty-two, little, little higher number to further down, um, that were on the road near the hedges and another one that was cutting through, uh, from one of my neighbor's yards to, to go to that area. It just seems like every time we turn around, we got skunks, we got skunk smell, we got all kinds of stuff. I know there's overgrown areas down behind the property that butts up to the properties at, um, Wilson Road. Uh, there's different areas along Lennox that, um, might have a safe haven for them to nest or whatever. I know that it's not my property. And I'm actually spending money on the sprinkled stuff, the critter ritter, stuff that they don't like the smell of, to spread it around to try to keep them from coming on my property.
Are they digging up your grass? Do they put holes?
They dig on my grass because they're looking for grubs.
So they're after grubs.
So, yeah.
With some grub that's on.
And it just seems like, I, I know in previous years, you know, you'd go once in a while, you'd say, "Oh, I smell a skunk." This year, they're all over the place and you see multiple skunks and they're crossing the street and running here and they're in my yard and like, just this past weekend, we saw six, four in one place, one, one in the front and one in the back of my property. Six in, in ten minutes. So I don't know what to do. I don't know what I can do. Like, they probably live on someone else's property. I know you can't shoot them. But, um, what do we do? Because we're overrun with skunks.
So can we, we got to find out the source. So do we have, we have any money for extermination? Because we did with the rats. We're having a rat problem down there, well, down on Wilson Road. Um, but if you've got that many skunks, I mean, I, I got a couple in my yard, one or two, but that's it. I mean, and I've been out there and they, they'll walk right by you, but not to the extreme where you can't get in your own house. So.
First time I, as a board of selectmen, had, heard about a skunk problem. I mean, we've got skunks in the town.
And not only in my neck of the woods, but the same week, the same weekend that we saw the, the six of them, we got home and my wife was on Facebook and she saw that someone else that's up on the, the peak where Little Nahant Road turns into Wilson Road.
Okay, yeah.
Had one on her front porch. And she posted a picture and was like, "Look, I got a skunk." And it was the same day.
Right.
And it was within probably ten minutes, so it wasn't the same skunks.
Yeah.
I mean, we're just hearing about them all over and, and, you know, they, they, I guess there's no predators. This, you know, dogs are all unleashed. They're not chasing them around and, you know, maybe, maybe we need more coyotes.
Just as the only thing that we get.
Anyway, so, um, I just wanted to bring that up, that we, we got skunks everywhere.
So it's up, you know where he lives, right? The corner of James Ave and.
Yeah.
So maybe we can get, um, do they go out the trash? Garbage, skunks, I wonder. Let's get an exterminator to find out because if that's the case.
I think we do, I, to answer your previous question, I think there is money in the budget for, under the board of selec-, oh, I gotta look. Maybe it's under DBW, but.
Right.
Some, um.
That's a huge problem up there. I mean, I don't.
Looking at action.
Yeah, I don't mind if one or two in my yard, but when you have that many toward the extreme like that, then they gotta go.
Who else said, Mike, uh, Mike?
Thank you. My name is Michael Manning. I live at twelve Fennel Way. I came, uh, tonight to, uh, bring you an updated copy of a petition which I gave you two months ago. And with your permission, I'll hand a couple of copies to the town administrator in one page.
Yeah, we got this, Mike. Mike, we received this.
Yes, I understand that this is a petition which I submitted, uh, just about a month ago. Um, and at the time, the clerk sent a PDF copy to all of the members of the board of selectmen. But since, um, there's a lot of discussion about being transparent, I wanted to make sure that members of the community were aware that I had submitted a petition containing over a hundred signatures, um, on the same petition which I had filed with you back in early June. Um, the petition language is essentially, uh, the same. Uh, it asks for the same article to be included in the next annual or special town meeting relative to a zoning bylaw change. Uh, it's signed by over a hundred citizens of the town of Nahant. We are simply calling to ask that it be put on the warrant whenever a special or annual town meeting is called. It's my understanding at this point that the next scheduled town meeting is the annual town meeting in May of two thousand and twenty. But in the event that another special town meeting were called, we would ask that it be put on that as well. We are not calling for a special town meeting. We are simply asked that that, um, zoning bylaw amendment be given consideration, uh, as it's being, uh, currently considered by the planning board. I'd be happy to answer any questions, um, but I simply wanted to make sure that you had a copy of the printed version, uh, of this petition and that the community was aware that it had been submitted. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I, I think that Mike, um, knowing that he's been a board of selectmen member for several years, he knows the rules, knows the law. So I say that we, you know, he's right. Instead of putting it on the warrant if we have a special town meeting.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Right now, uh, there's no special town meeting. Uh, I don't think we're going to have one right now. We don't know yet, but, uh, I'm just like, it'll go the annual town meeting, especially if the zoning change. So I might vote to have that in the annual town meeting too, you know. But no problem. We'll make sure it goes ahead. Anyone else? According to your skunks, uh, we'll, we'll get back to you on that. I'm not.
They are. You just don't want to tangle with one. Uh, Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. I'll second the motion. Further discussion? All those in favor of singing by saying aye?
Aye.
Good night. Thank you very much.